Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, October 19th. I would ask everybody to put their phones on silent ring. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson. Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Mark.
Here. Could we stand for the pledge and the prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, in the midst of this health crisis, we are humbled and reminded that we do not control nature but must respect it and work with it. You hold in your hands the depths of the earth and the highest mountains as well. You made the sea and it belongs to you, the dry land too, for it was formed by your hands. As we recognize our dependence on your providence, grant us health and safety. Kindly, dear Lord, give the members of this body the virtue of courage in difficult times, the virtue of charity in all times, and at the end of the day, the certain knowledge that they have served their county well. Amen.
The approval of the agenda is next. I have an addition to the approval of agenda. We have a closed session per on personnel. It'll be item number 17. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
A motion of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of September 29th, 2020, special session and October 5th, our regular session. Tax releases and refunds, emergency service budget amendment, recreation and parks, community foundation grant, social service title, 3D health promotion funds budget amendment. We have a social service senior center, general purpose funds budget amendment, and a national American Indian proclamation. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Ain't no discussion? Have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Booker.
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
I have the pleasure and the honor to recognize Historic Corps proclamation, and I'd like those people to come up and first if you could read the proclamation.
Sure. Proclamation recognition of Historic Corps. Whereas the New Bern Academy was established in March 1764 by the North Carolina Legislature and work was completed by April 1767. And whereas the public school in New Bern quickly earned a reputation as one of the best regulated schools of its kind in America. And whereas the original framed building was destroyed by fire in 1795 and the legislature authorized money for a new schoolhouse. And whereas in 1810, the academy moved into a new brick building and continued to serve as a school in Craven County until 1971, and was then utilized as a Civil War museum. And whereas it became apparent the academy was in dire need of restoration. And whereas Historic Corps is a 301, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that provides volunteers of all skill levels with hands-on experience preserving historic structures on public lands all across America. And whereas Historic Corps' mission is to save and sustain historic places for public benefit through partnerships that foster public involvement, engage volunteers, and provide training and education. And whereas Historic Corps did enter into a partnership with donors to the Tryon Palace Foundation for the restoration of the New Bern Academy Building. And whereas Historic Corps works to ensure America's cultural and historical resources exist for generations to come, they recognize the importance of the academy structure. And whereas Historic Corps undertook the total restoration of this building, including the brick and mortar, as well as repair of the wooden parts of the structure, and now the copula and entrance portico of the building itself. Whereas Historic Corps has completed phases one and two, and will complete phase three of the total restoration of the academy by the end of October. Now therefore, the Craven County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Historic Corps for their preservation skills and magnificent contribution to sustain a portion of Craven County's history by the total restoration of the academy.
It is my pleasure and my honor, Chairman of Craven County Commission and all of the Commissions, to present this proclamation to you. Thank you very much. For the work that you have done, which has been spent, I understand this will be completed by the end of the month.
Yes.
Tipped it around. Open up.
I want to thank you all for coming and congratulations on your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask all the Commissioners and citizens of this county to take time out of your busy schedules and go by the academy building and see our volunteers that work saving the structure. It is totally because of Historic Corps that this historic building is being restored to its original splendor, and it is pretty awesome that they are volunteers doing that for us.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're on item number three. And Shimi Sheeney, I hope I pronounced that right, Burns, is here to, from the Office of the Recovery or Resiliency, presentation.
My office is looking at what you're doing. I'm going to kill you, bitch. Not even. Good morning. Good morning. This is Hayley Piper-Haines. I'm Shimi Burns, my colleague, but I will be giving the presentation today. And I think that there are slot bites. Are those available? They can't hear me unless they can't see my mouth moving. It was just they caught my name softly, didn't let them know I'm not here.
I don't know where that's coming from.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank you for having me here today. It is, hold on a second, a pleasure to be with Craven County. My family has deep roots with Craven County. My husband is a native. He was born on base in Havelock. And my father-in-law was a career Marine. My mother-in-law worked her entire career there in Craven County Schools as a teacher. And so I sort of consider it my second home. I'm from western North Carolina, but I do consider Craven County sort of as my second home, so it's my pleasure to be able to present to you today. Can we go to the next slide? So we're going to go through a bit about rebuild program, which my office, the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency runs. The, well first, I'll introduce some of it, give you a little bit of an overview of INCOR, give you quite a bit about the homeowner recovery program, which is a program that is going on currently and the application period is open, then talk to you about strategic buyout program, which, there are some areas that are going to be in Craven County, so I wanted to let you all know a bit about that, and then talk about some other programs that we run. Next slide. So in the wake of Hurricane Florence, Governor Cooper established our office to lead the state's efforts in rebuilding smarter and stronger and working with nature rather than against it to try and get us to be more resilient. INCOR manages the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development funding of two grant projects. One is the Community Development Block Grants for Disaster Recovery and the Community Development Block Grants for Mitigation. Both of these are focused on helping folks who have low to moderate income. We also manage the Grants and Loan Program for local and tribal governments, and that can be found at our, more details about that can be found at our website at www.rebuild.nc.gov. We also have a resiliency mission in building back stronger and smarter, and we have one of the few state resiliency officers, that's Dr. Jess Whitehead. She came to us from her work with C-Grant, but now heads up our resiliency efforts. We have a State Disaster Recovery Task Force with 12 recovery support functions grouped. As you can see, there are emergency management, communications, and intergovernmental relations, nonprofit and volunteerism, health and human services, transportation and infrastructure, business and workforce development, environmental preservation, housing, agriculture, cultural resources, education, and long-term community planning, capacity building, and resiliency. And we recently published the North Carolina Quick Cert Guide, which is a resource for local governments to be able to engage in their own resiliency work. That can also be found on our website under resiliency. Next slide. So I want to talk about our homeowner recovery program, which is one of our major programs. It's, the bulk of a lot of our funds do go into the homeowner recovery program. This provides assistance to repair, reconstruct, and elevate homes that were damaged by Hurricane Florence or Hurricane Matthew or both. Next slide. In order to be eligible for the program, you should own a home that was damaged by Hurricane Florence or Matthew, and have occupied that home as a primary residence at the time of the storm, and continue to occupy it through project completion. You must be lawfully present in the United States, have legal authority to enter into a funding award, and be willing to give our staff, inspectors, contractors access to the damaged property. For eligibility, we do look at income. Most of our funds are focused on people who make 80% or less of area median income, but there is a limit that if you cannot earn more than 150% of the area median income. We still encourage people who are unsure where they are on that spectrum to go ahead and apply. We will make that determination and then let them know whether or not they qualify. But you can see that, an example here is in Cumberland County, an annual household income of $87,150 would be at 150 of AMI for a family of four, and this varies by county. And people who have, so we reopened our application for these funds in June, and people who had applied under Matthew did not have to reapply. We are, we've adjusted some policies to make the award process more, excuse me, advantageous for those who are applying, and we are reexamining all existing applications under the new policies. Next slide. So one of the questions we get sometimes is can homeowners apply for the programs if they have received funding from a different grant program? And the answer is yes. They can participate if they received other funds from other sources. They just need to include that information in their application. And then we examine their funding and how it was used to see whether or not it is something that we have to calculate into the award. Next slide. As you can see, these are the most impacted and distressed counties, and HUD says that we have to spend, I think it's 80% of our funds in the most impacted and distressed counties. And as you can see, and you are very well aware because you all lived through it, Craven County is one of the most impacted and distressed counties for Florence. So that works in favor of people who live in Craven County in terms of awards. Next slide. So as I've said, Craven County is a Florence mid-county. You can see on the map on the right that these are all the counties that were affected by Florence, and it's a wide range there, so anyone in those counties can apply, but mid-counties get more consideration for funding. And right now, there have been 125 people who have applied to the homeowner recovery program from Craven County since June 15th. And the amount that we've committed, and this is actually under Matthew funding, is 1.8 million to Craven County residents. And we also sought flexibility, and were granted flexibility by HUD, to allow us to tie back to either storm. So if someone was, say they were, they were affected by Matthew and they got a FEMA grant of assistance under Matthew, and then they were also affected by Florence and they got nothing from FEMA in Florence, we can, we will tie back to Florence, and that alleviates an escrow burden for the applicant so that they can more fully recover. We will help them recover from both storms. We don't differentiate in our recovery, so all applicants will be helped to recover fully from both storms. Next slide. So we have recently opened our centers on a limited basis, and Craven County, as you can see, has one that's open in New Bern. These are appointment-only curbside drop-off and pickup of documents. What we found was a lot of folks, we were prohibited from opening the centers due to COVID, but as people engaged in our online application or filled out paper for applications, a lot of people were reluctant understandably to send in some of the really critical documents via the mail, or they didn't want to scan it in and send it in over the internet. And so we have been able to open for these curbside drop-off and pickup appointments. And what happens is someone will drive up, park, they're given a number to call, and someone comes out to their car, they are masked, and can retrieve those important documents, take them back in the center, scan them in, so that they're a part of that person's application, and then bring those critical documents back to the person in the car. And that seems to be working very well, and we want to encourage those who have already applied, but maybe their application is not moving forward because we don't have all the documentation, to take advantage of these appointments so that we can get the complete documentation so we can move them forward in the steps. Next slide. So the way that folks apply, there's a few ways. They can go to our website at rebuild.nc.gov/HRP, and there's an online application that they can fill out. There are also, they can also print applications and required forms from our website and then mail those in to our center, or they can bring them to the center there in Craven County. And if they need some help in filling out those applications, they can call 833-ASK-RBNC for a virtual appointment in order to help complete those applications. We're hoping that we can open at some point for face-to-face appointments, but we're not there yet, and we just opened October 5th for these curbside drop-off appointments. And so we're seeing how that goes and looking at the trajectory of COVID-19 before we further open up. We want to keep our applicants safe and we want to keep our staff safe. Next slide. So I do want to talk to you some about the strategic buyout program. We provide eligible property owners located in areas that are prone to repeated flooding the opportunity to relocate to safer land. Next slide. And so how this works is that we first work with the local government, such as the county commission and your various departments that would be involved in this, to identify areas with the greatest risk of damage from future hurricanes and floods. And I do understand that we are in that process now of looking at Craven County for the appropriate areas that could be eligible for strategic buyout. Then we, when we open that, when those are settled, then we reach out to the residents that live in that area to make them aware of the program. It's a completely voluntary program, and we do some education with them about how they are evaluated and what kind of incentives they may be eligible for. The idea being that that property would be bought out, it would be deeded to the local government, and there would, all the structures would be removed, and there would be no structures allowed on the property from that point forward with a deed restriction. Folks are provided incentives in order to be able to move to a place that is safer, either within the county or within the state. Next slide. And coming soon, we do have a small rental repair program, which is aimed at small rental units, landlords that have few numbers of units that have been damaged by Matthew or Florence, and it will help them restore those so that they can remain affordable housing units. And you can see that you have to have remaining repairs needed of $5,000 on the property. Next slide. And so we are committed to recovery. It is our main focus in our office. I do want to talk to you just for a few minutes about the HOPE program, which is our Housing Opportunities and Prevention of Eviction program, which opened on Thursday. And that is to provide rent and utility assistance to low and moderate income renters. And I wanted to make you aware that in Craven County, thus far, there have been 110 households that have applied for assistance that appear to be eligible. We are getting a very high volume of applications, and they're really going in through 211. That's how folks apply. They can go online to nc211.org/HOPE, and there is a simple application there that they can fill out, or they can call 211 if they need assistance in completing that application. Then they are referred to a local community partner who will step them through the complete application process. The last that I heard on Friday was we had approaching 3,000 applications statewide, so demand is very high. If folks are in need of rent or utility assistance, we encourage them to go ahead and apply now because of the limitation of funds. The total amount of funds that we have for the state is $117 million, and we know that that is likely not nearly enough for the need that is out there. But we very much want to get this money out on the ground so that it can restore people to being able to stay in their homes through the pandemic, as well as pay their utility bills. A lot of times, those utilities are being paid to local governments, and so we're hoping that that will also help local governments in their recovery during the pandemic, because we know that they have been largely affected by the fact that so many people have become unemployed or underemployed and haven't been able to pay their bills. So at this point, that is my report to you, and I am ready for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Do any of the Commissions have any questions they'd like to ask? Commissioner Booker?
Chairman, this is Mr. Liner.
Yes, Mr. Liner.
Sir, ma'am, I have a question in regards to the rental repair program. Is that funding competing with the other money for homeowners as far as the buyout and repair?
I'm sorry.
Or you have separate money set aside?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I said, are you have separate money set aside, or is that a competing program?
Yeah, so the money is set aside. We have, part of the requirements that HUD has is that we have to do a plan that they approve, and so we divide up the larger pot of money into different programs. So there is money set aside for the homeowner recovery program, there's money set aside for strategic buyout program, and then there's money that's set aside for small rental repair, and then we have also funds that are affordable housing, and a couple, we also with Florence have funds set aside for some job training that we are engaging with the community colleges. We want to train North Carolinians in some of these skilled jobs of rebuilding, so that these jobs are going to North Carolinians, and we're all from leaving a more trained and skilled workforce. So all that money has been parsed out, and they are not competing with each other.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Booker?
It's been over two years since Florence came to visit, and you stated that you recently opened an office in New Bern. Two years after the fact seems almost like, I wouldn't say a waste of time, but I'm just wondering, why now? Why two years later?
Well, I want to make you aware that, so first of all, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds are not statutorily administered funds. Everything that we are able to do with that money has to come from a federal register notice. That federal register notice came out 500 days after Florence hit. So the federal government took 500 days to give us permission to be able to spend that money. Within 24 hours, our office submitted the plan to, or put it out for public comment, the plan for spending that money, because we knew it was coming, but we didn't know when it was coming, so we went ahead and worked on that plan so that we could not, that we would not be further delayed. But I will tell you that, you know, that delay of 500 days was beyond significant in us being able to get that money out. The other thing to realize is that this money is meant to be the funding of last resort. So all other avenues of funding are supposed to be exhausted before CDBGDR money is made available. So it is meant to be sort of the last thing, but I just want to make you aware that the federal government delaying that federal register notice for 500 days impacted our ability to get this program going in what we would consider to be an appropriate amount of time.
If I understood your presentation correctly, FEMA money that comes from the federal government to the state to the state would flow through your department and then to counties? Was that, because it mentioned FEMA in your presentation?
FEMA is a federal program, and it works strongly with emergency management. It does not run through our office.
As you may or may not, I just want to make, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We have to take FEMA, so for an individual, if they get individual assistance, we have to take, one of the things that HUD, that's a requirement of this funding, of these funds, is that we have to ensure that whatever we are paying out of these funds does not duplicate other benefits that someone has received. So someone has to, someone would have to show when they applied, if they got an individual assistance grant from FEMA, they would need to disclose that on their application, so that we could examine that funding and how it was used to see whether or not we count it against the award that they would get from our funds. It's complicated, and, you know, it's complicated. But we do not administer the FEMA funds. That is administered by FEMA in cooperation with emergency management. And emergency management is our sister agency. Both emergency management and our office are under the directorship of Mike Spraberry.
It's frustrating for us, the county, when we are told by the federal government that the money has gone to the state, and yet we're sitting here, and I'm not saying today, but we were sitting here with a lot of disasters that needed to be addressed and no money because it was somewhere, somewhere in the pipeline. And again, it's finger pointing, but the federal government said, oh, we've transferred the funds to the state. So I hope in the future, we don't have those kind of delays that we've had on these last couple of storms. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. That, you know, the delay is not good for anyone. And one of the things that Governor Cooper has lobbied Congress to do, which would speed things up a lot, is to make the disaster recovery funds statutory, so that we wouldn't have to wait for a federal register notice to come out. Like, our regular CDBG funds, our regular community development block grant funds are statutory. So everybody knows what the rules of the road are, and when that money gets passed down to the state, it's split out like it's supposed to and can be utilized. But with CDBGDR money, we have to wait for that federal registered notice. So one of the things that would really speed that up, and if you all ever have the opportunity to speak to your representative, is to get this kind of funding, since it's going to be happening again, get it into a statutory framework, rather than us having to wait on a federal agency to issue that notice, because that would allow us to move so much more quickly.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Ms. Haines, my name is Jason Jones, County Commissioner, and the chairman and myself represent areas that were affected by Hurricane Matthew and Hurricane Floyd, areas that had a double whammy. Craven County, as you know, has been through a lot of trying times, just like other counties throughout eastern North Carolina. I saw on your map there, and, you know, you had counties that I think priorities maybe, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but priority may be given to Hurricane Florence for some counties, priority may be given to Hurricane Matthew. But still, we've got, as Commissioner Booker was just talking about with folks two years out with Hurricane Florence, we still have many citizens in our county that are still waiting for funding from Hurricane Matthew. I think, you know, that's, for the chairman and myself, that's the most frustrating. My question is, you know, how are y'all connecting with those individuals? I mean, I know we've already received some funding, and we appreciate that, that it's been allocated for those citizens. But, I mean, are you still receiving applications for Hurricane Matthew here in Craven County?
Folks who had damage from Matthew but not Florence are still eligible to apply. We do have some in the pipeline from, that applied under Hurricane Matthew. It tends to be more complicated cases, or cases where there's a duplication of benefits issue, or there's a lot of, this is just a super complex program. And there are still folks who applied under the Matthew application period that are in the pipeline. What we are doing with those folks is we are examining, redoing their applications in light of the policy adjustments that we've been able to make after seeking flexibility from HUD. What was happening before was you had damage, so someone was damaged in Matthew, and they applied under Matthew, and then they were subsequently damaged under Florence, and they got federal benefit under Florence. Under previous guidance, HUD was requiring us to count the benefits that they received from both storms against the applicant when we were making their award, which meant that they were having to bring to the table a very high escrow amount, usually something that they could not accommodate, because they are low and moderate income people already. What we did was go to HUD and say, listen, this is not working. This is not something that's going to allow us to help people like they need to. And so that's where I'm talking about that storm tieback, where we tie back to one storm and not the other, which allows us to only consider escrow or benefits received under one storm rather than both. That was really hindering a lot of people from being able to meaningfully participate in our program. And so we are very focused on those folks. We know that there are people who have outstanding damage to their homes, and we are very much focused on getting them through the process.
Last comment I'll just make, and, you know, and I know you're aware of this, not only in our county, but other counties too, but, you know, for some of these citizens, they've been flooded twice. And, you know, it's probably a matter of when that they will be flooded again. You know, we don't want to lose these individuals from living in our district, the chairman and myself, but, I mean, the option for many of them is really a buyout, you know, probably in a lot of these places. I heard you make the comment that, you know, possibly there might be down the road, there could be more funding coming, you know, possibly. And, you know, we, I feel like many of our citizens were overlooked during Matthew, you know. And we got here to Florence, and folks, don't get me wrong, they deserve every penny they get, and they need it. But I think, you know, we forgot Matthew here in Craven County from the state, and when Florence came, it kind of put things in gear. But we need to make sure we go back and not forget both. And I know you're doing that. I'm not trying to criticize you. I appreciate what your office is doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with the vice chairman. We still have people living in hotels from Matthew, and it would seem to me that they should be considered first. As far as Florence, are you saying that there is a delay from FEMA as far as paying some of the, in the area of reported flooding that has happened year after year, where people have applied to raise their homes? Are you saying that FEMA is holding that money back?
No, sir. What I was saying was that HUD, which is where our money comes from, did not publish a federal register notice to allow us to move forward with this program for 500 days. You know, the funding was appropriated by Congress not long after Florence, and it was, you know, it wasn't months, it was over a year, close to two, before HUD basically gave the mother may I to everyone who had gotten funding in that appropriation.
Okay, all right.
So not FEMA, it is HUD.
Okay. Thank you very much for your report. We appreciate your coming.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is the ABC Board presentation. Due to the fact that we're having such a long program this morning, I would ask that we have the check presented to the board. And also, as far as your policy, we've had the information. It's basically the same travel policy as we have. So I'll just ask for a motion to approve that. In the meantime, you have a check to deliver?
To move.
I'm going to ask this year, Mr. Chairman, that our general manager present the check. He and the rest of the managers are the ones who did the hard work this year. And that's the largest check that Craven County has received, along with various cities and towns, the largest check to New Bern, Havlock, and Vanceboro in the check this year, Mr. Chairman, which they need. So nearly $1.23 million has come back to our county and to our town.
Okay, thank you very much. And I would ask for a motion to have this put into my account, but I know that's. As far as the travel policy, each commissioner's had an opportunity to look at the travel policy. You can see that it is basically the same as the county travel policy. I'd ask for a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Mr. Vice, I was going to ask for the finance director, but you can take care of that, can you, sir?
Yes, sir, we got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. City of New Bern easement request. And we have Jordan Hughes.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. I've had the pleasure of meeting most of y'all over the years. I think for those who haven't, my name is Jordan Hughes. I'm the city engineer for the city of New Bern. What I have before you this morning is a couple of easement requests for an upcoming sewer pipeline project that the city is working on. This pipeline project has been a couple of years in planning and design. We're getting close to wrapping up everything with permits and hope to be in construction with this in early 2021. What this project will do is increase the city's capabilities of providing sewer service to our residents and also county residents east of the Trent River. So these are areas in Jame City, to Burna, Carolina Colors, out towards County Line Road, those areas. The two easements you have, one is located on Howell Road. This is right beside the county's maintenance and water maintenance building there. This is a real thin easement right along the road right-of-way of Howell Road, essentially going to put the pipeline between the existing right-of-way and existing landscape buffer there. Should not have really any impact to the property for operation during construction or after construction. The other is one that kind of goes cross-country from Scott Street back to Scotts Creek, through some of the vacant land there off the back of the airport that it was, I think, purchased by the county many years ago. Several tracks in there. We've tried to run that easement along some existing property lines, try to make everything a little more convenient for everybody. We do understand that there's some potential for realignment of Williams Road in that area, in talking to the airport, talking to Mr. Shore at the airport. I think our proposed improvements will be far enough to the west that it will be out of the way of any future improvements or adjustments to Williams Road. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has in regards to the project or the requested easements.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have one question, Jordan. Nice to see you again. You said you think easement will not interfere with any future improvements to Williams Road.
The Williams Road is really.
Possible probable 99% would define, we think.
With the kind of sketch plan they have, we're clear now, understanding that there really is no engineered design plans of what that future improvement is, kind of an idea right now. So based on the idea, we're okay. Depending on what the future plans look like, there could be some potential impact. If there is, it's not an issue. We kind of deal with that all the time with adjusting utilities for road improvements.
Okay, so it's not a deal breaker at some future day. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ben, is there any other discussion? Ben, no other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you, sir.
Department of Matters, Bobby West. Getting a familiar face here, Bobby.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing me to come before you this morning. Hope y'all having a good day.
So far.
Let's keep it rolling, then. Let's keep it rolling. I'm here this morning, sir, to present in the agenda a Burn JAG grant in a partnership with the city of New Bern. This grant will allow us to purchase some equipment and also allow New Bern PD to purchase some needed equipment to better help us fight the opioid crisis, as well as other law enforcement activities. It's a federal grant from the Department of Justice and a justice assistance grant. It's for a total of $10,754, which will be split between the city and the county. The county will receive $3,654 to purchase a Springfield rifle and some optics for the SRT. And the city will receive $7,100, which will help them, aid them in purchasing a K-9, a police K-9, and training and equipment for the K-9. So with that, I would like to ask that you would accept it and allow us to do this.
Do I have a motion?
To move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? And no discussion. Do I need a roll call vote on this?
Yes.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Y'all have a good day.
Next is Kelly Walker and Roy Beeson on COTS.
While we're maybe good, Melanie's here for elections. If you want to go ahead and skip to her, so see her sitting across the way.
Okay, let's go to Melanie. Just a moment now.
Can we now?
Oh. We can hear you, we can't see you.
If you'll go just troubleshoot that, and we can see him, and then we'll be ready for him.
All right, let's have Melanie come up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two agenda items for money to be received. My first one is Center for Tech and Civic Life for a COVID grant. We've been awarded $70,429.50. This is to help us with COVID supplies, PPEs, and we are running through them during one stop, so it's well needed, and also to help pay for our temporary staff, overtime hours, and hours that they're working.
Okay, do I have a motion?
To move.
Don't move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ben, there's no discussion. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
The second one is the 2020 CARES Act Supplemental Funds. It's coming from the legislation. This is to a grant to give Election Day poll workers an extra $100, and to help pay for other supplies and things related to COVID in the November 2020 election. The award is $32,500.
Okay, so move. Motion, second?
Second.
Discussion? And no discussion? Can I have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Ms. Ray a question?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So far, everything going.
So far, everything going pretty good with early voting?
Yes, we have 124 new officials, so getting that first day under their belt yields a learning curve. But we have voted 15,795 people, 9,606 as of yesterday in one stop, 6,189 who have returned ballots by mail. So record numbers all over for this.
That number, that total number was what now?
15,795.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What can I ask?
Sure.
And I don't know if you know that, is that percentage of our voters tracking with other counties across the state?
Everyone is seeing record numbers from, according to the North Carolina State Board. Yes, ma'am.
Good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're back to Kelly Walker. Still sorting that out? All right, let's. Oh, to the planning department, I guess.
Same.
Oh, okay. All right. And I guess Jeffrey's included in that, huh?
He should be on his own.
Jeffrey, are you available?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Can you see me?
No, we can't see you.
Oh, one second.
Ah, now we got you.
There you are.
Okay.
I'm glad to see you got a blue shirt and red tie on.
Yeah, we got a memo together, Chairman. We just have two budget amendments to bring forward to you this morning. The first is our roll forward budget. These are donation funds that we have through the senior center for earmarked programs that were left unspent last fiscal year. And you'll see those numbers there, and we're just asking you to roll those numbers forward. As you know, in March, we ceased a lot of senior center operations, therefore that curtailed a lot of our spending that would have come out of these accounts to go towards programs that we run.
That's in the amount of $28,608.
Yes, that is.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? And no discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Next?
Yes, our second, our second order of business is a budget amendment. We have started to receiving funds from some of the federal acts that have come down through coronavirus. This one is through the Families First Act. And AAA informed us of monies that was earmarked for senior centers. And these monies are ones that have been awarded to our agency, and we're asking to take those monies and add them to the budget. There is no local match. These funds were really targeted towards helping our senior centers to implement our mills programs through the times of COVID-19 and taking precautions and measures to ensure that they could continue to be done so.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And any discussion on this? And no discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank y'all very much.
We should be ready for CARTS. Good morning, Kelly.
We have several items on the agenda. Our first one is a request of scheduled public hearing for our North Carolina Department of Transportation grant application. The 5311 Community Transportation Program grant is a formula-based allocation grant for public transportation projects in non-urbanized areas. CARTS has historically relied on this grant to assist with the cost of providing rural public transit services. North Carolina Department of Transportation Integrated Mobility Division has a process for capital projects to be application, which does not specify to which grant the capital projects will be placed. This allows for flexibility based on grant availability, and this determination will be made at the state level. Capital projects to be included in this grant application are pending guidance from the Integrated Mobility Division. Historically, this is where CARTS applies for replacement vehicles. Grant application information will be available no later than October 26, 2020 on CARTS webpage and in the CARTS office. CARTS is requesting a combined public hearing to be set for November 2nd, 2020 meeting. This grant application is for fiscal year 2022.
Okay. CARTS is asking to requesting a combined public hearing for November the 2nd. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? The ayes have it. Thank you. Go on.
Now we are requesting authorization to submit an amended 5311 CARES Act agreement. On August 14th, the North Carolina Board of Transportation approved additional funds to amend the 5311 CARES Act grant. The additional amount approved for CARTS was $690,192. An amended agreement is required before CARTS may access these funds. If amended, the total 5311 CARES Act funds, which could be spent on operating expenses, would be $1,078,620, and they must be spent by June 30th, 2021, unless the North Carolina Department of Transportation grants a period of performance extension. The latter amended agreement have been provided in attachment on number 7B. CARTS is working to identify eligible operational projects and expenses that will benefit our service area. Examples of such complete projects include the expansion of operating hours to meet employment-related transportation needs, as well as equipment to improve the safety of our drivers and passengers.
Okay, do I?
Requesting approval to submit an amended 5311 CARES Act agreement to include the additional funds, with the understanding that a budget amendment will be brought before the board commissioners authorize future expenditures. This allows CARTS to secure access to the additional funds while identifying opportunities to improve the operations of CARTS.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Do we need a roll call vote on? No. All those in favor, any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? The ayes have it.
Morning.
Morning.
They have a requesting adoption of the FY 1920 Annual Report Management Review. This is specifically tied to the Safety and Security Plan that was originally adopted on 19 November 2018, and it has a requirement for annual review to ensure all the information's correct. Right now, CARTS doesn't have any revisions at this time, or revision recommendations at this time, report has been provided. Subject to your questions, we're requesting adoption of the Annual Report and Annual Review.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion and a second?
Second.
And any discussion? And no discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? The ayes have it.
Okay, and our final item is to request approval to apply for DHHS CARES Act funds. Federal Coronavirus Relief Funds Apportion to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services received CARES Act apportionment by the North Carolina General Assembly under Section Log 2020-4, Section 8.3, Parenthesis 2.7. For flexible use, has been made available to transit systems via the North Carolina Department of Transportation Integrated Mobility Division. Using the Rural Operating Assistance Program, or ROP structure, the transit system shall use the transferred funds to meet the raw transportation needs of ROP-eligible people in the 34 Tier 1 World County, included but not limited to elderly or disabled individuals. Of the three counties served by CARTS, Jones County's eligibility criteria have been a Tier 1 World County. The funds are made available to the transit system for each eligible county. In the public transit system for Jones County, CARTS via Craven County is the eligible applicant. The funds will only be available for use in Jones County. CARTS estimates a need of approximately $25,000 for Jones County between September 2020 and December 2020. Shirts prior to September 2020 have already been included in our 5311 CARES Act grants claims and therefore are not eligible to be filed against under the DHHS CARES Act fund. We are requesting authorization to proceed with submitting an application for $25,000 of DHHS CARES Act funds for use in Jones County for a period of performance in the senior.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve $25,000 CARES Act fund?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Bumgardner is up next. On Department of Matters Planning Request to Set Public Hearing for the Coronavirus Program Application.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Staff is requesting that the commissioners set a public hearing for November 2nd at 7:00 PM to hear comments regarding the county's intent to apply for the Community Development Block Grant coronavirus funding. This November 2nd meeting will be the first of two required public hearings for this program application. The CDVG Coronavirus Program, which is administered through the North Carolina Division of Rural Economic Development, is designed to help units of government prevent, respond to, and prepare for the health and economic impacts of COVID-19, while benefiting primary to low-income, low-to-moderate income persons. Public service activities which serve individuals or families impacted by coronavirus may include substantial subsistence payments, employment training, testing and diagnosis, equipment supplies and materials, distribution, health services, mental health services, broadband and communication support, and services for special needs population. It also looks at public facility activities which support individuals or groups impacted or serving those with coronavirus. That may include acquisition, construction, reconstruction, or installation of public works, facilities, site improvements, rehabilitation of buildings and improvements, and/or broadband communication support. Also, it addresses economic development assistance projects that are available in conjunction with one or more existing private for-profit small businesses that undertake CDVG coronavirus eligible activities. The maximum grant award is $900,000, which includes a 10% pre-award planning and administration allocation. At this time, we are requesting that the board set the first public hearing for November 2nd, permission relating at 7:00 PM.
Okay, do I have a motion to set a public hearing? Or for another, a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? The ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Scott Harrelson, Department of Health.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have four agenda items for your consideration this morning, and fortunately, all four of them should provide for more revenue for the department. The first up is hospice billing rates. There's been a slight increase in Medicaid for the hospice rates. I think you have in possession our current rates, the new updated Medicaid reimbursement rates, and basically, we are raising to the next, to even dollar amounts routine hospice care at $185 per day, continuous home care at $60 per hour, inpatient respite care at $460 per day, and also, general inpatient care to $970 per day.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the new billing rates for hospice?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you. With the next agenda item, the additional funding for WIC program?
Yes, sir, Scott. It's the health billing rate.
The health.
I'm sorry, got them out of order. Health billing, thank you, Mr. Vice. Health billing rates, this is unprecedented. We had a 40% Medicaid rate hike, and we've been enjoying this rate hike for the past few months. But as of October 1, we were informed that they would no longer come automatically. We would have to increase the rates after October 1 to receive these rate hikes for the additional reimbursement. So that's what we've done. We've gone in and we've looked at the increase rate, and there are, as you can tell, numerous rates here to increase. We can retro add it a little back to October 1 to receive this increased reimbursement.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the billing rates?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nays? The ayes have it. Now we're in WIC.
Thank you, thank you. All right, unfortunately, our WIC program had received some funding cuts in the past year. We don't put any county money into WIC, so it's a federal program. So we had to basically do away with two administrative positions in WIC through attrition, fortunately. And now, they have actually come back and given us $9,636 in WIC funding, additional WIC funding. And when we discussed this with our WIC director, Lisa Mayo, she really needed a part-time position, and that's what we'd like to use this money for, part-time employees.
Okay, I need a motion to vote needed to approve the budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Okay, now we're up to Colbert.
Yes, sir. More COVID funding from the CARES Act. We received in total another $199,685. And a lot of money streams coming in, both from the FCA side and the public health side. So this is enhancing detection activities. We have a medley of items here for personal protective equipment, flu test kits, antigen test kits. The antigen test kits are the rapid response kits within 15 minutes. Contracted employees, and a few capital outlay items as well. Bar code scanners, some lab equipment, which is what these funds were meant for, five laptops for docking stations, replacing the old generator we have here, which also is very important to us because when the power goes down, it keeps our lab refrigerators. when the power goes down, it keeps our lab refrigerators with very expensive vaccines up and running. Some handicap entrances for our main facility here in New Bern, where we can do the hand treat doors at the front, and also upgrade to our existing negative pressure room that we have in child health. There's actually another round of funding that we're looking at, doing an additional negative pressure room, and one of our adult primary care units as well, but that's, uh, still to come. All total, $199,685.
Okay, I have a, um, roll call vote is needed. No, I have a motion, please?
To move.
Second.
And then we need a roll call vote if there's no discussion on the $200,000.
I have a question. What is a negative pressure room?
Yes, ma'am. A negative pressure room, uh, is basically a room that we have in our clinic setup that does not circulate air, um, through the HVAC system. It has, uh, HEPA filters, and usually, you replace somebody who may be a, may be a positive TB patient or some other respiratory...
So containment.
...infection in that room. And now with our current layout, if we could do that, well, we found that we've had our negative pressure room in-house for some time now, and this $15,000 we're hoping that we can upgrade to, um, most recent standards. Uh, and we get this guidance from an industrial hygienist who's a state employee, it's a regional employee, we bring them.
Hey, is there any other discussion? All right, be no other discussion or roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes. Thank you, sir. All right, next is Assistant County Manager Gene Hodges.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
A few weeks ago, maintenance was alerted to a large water leak in the Human Services Building. Upon investigation, it was found that a large crack had formed in the boiler that the facility uses for heating. The unit has been in operation for over 30 years, has been well-maintained and repaired when necessary. It was determined by the facility director, our HVAC technicians and contractors, that the age of the system and the amount of time needed to repair the unit, uh, that replacing the unit would be a better option. Additionally, in the FY 20, 20, in FY 2020, 2021 approved budget was an appropriation for the replacement of the hot water pumps that are a part of this system. This budget appropriation was $60,000. Prices were solicited from three of our frequently used contractors for a total replacement of the boiler and related pump system. One contractor, Brady Services, declined to provide pricing due to their current workload and the delivery time that the county was requiring. Two contractors, Piedmont Service Group and Heat Transfer Solutions, did provide pricing. Piedmont provided the low pricing of a turnkey replacement of the boiler and hot water pumps of $95,400. So, at this time, we're requesting a budget amendment as shown in Attachment 12, in the amount of $36,000, to contract with Piedmont Service Group to provide a replacement boiler and hot water pumps. The additional $600 is going to be used for programming calls with our HVAC systems monitoring company to program all the new components into our building systems interface.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the budget amendment for $36,000, authorize staff to contact Piedmont Service Corp. to replace the boiler. A motion?
Move.
Second? I'll make the second. Uh, any discussion on this? May no discussion? I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell? Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is appointments. Appointments be effective immediately on less otherwise specified. Pending appointments is Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Community Child Protection Team, Craven Aging Planning Board, Craven Pemeco Regional Library Board. Mr. Jones, you're gonna, Commissioner Jones, you're gonna check on that. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Regional Aging Advisory Board, Senior Legislative Tarheel Alternate, and Voluntary Agricultural District Advisory Board. Community Child Protection Team.
Kimberly. Kimberly Marwin.
Okay, we'll reappoint. Craven Aging Planning Board.
Chairman, I'd like you to hold on that one until the November meeting, and I'd like to ask Nan to find out how long this lady's been on the board.
Okay.
Okay. Fire Tax Commissioners, we took up last week, I believe we voted on that. Fire Relief Fund Commissioners, we also voted on it.
These are different individuals.
They are.
Well, if I look back in the, uh, um, the minutes, and we did do Jeff, Joseph Midget and Aaron McGlaughlin, Rodney Russell was not...
Rodney Russell we didn't do, right.
And then under Fire and Relief Order Trustees, we did Dred Mitchell and Aaron McGlaughlin. So, Mr. Chairman, under Fire Tax Commissioner, I would ask to Mr. Rodney Russell be reappointed.
Okay, we'll reappoint Mr. Rodney Russell by acclamation, unless otherwise, there's some other appointment.
And, Mr. Chairman, we need to go back up to the Planning Board. Mr. Hill, I'm not for sure whose district he's in.
Mr. Jones, he would represent Commissioner Booker's district.
Commissioner Booker. We're talking about the Planning Board.
What?
The Planning Board. Mr. Hill is up for reappointment. He's in your district.
Yes.
You want to reappoint?
Reappoint?
Danny Hill?
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Reappointed. Upcoming terms expiring. Craven County Health Board, Jim Davis, uh, Janelle Boots, Craven County Planning Board, Kurt Stegman, and the Craven Pemeco Regional Library Board, Judy Byrd.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Sir, would you have the clerk also get me the years that Ms. Byrd has set on that board?
Will do.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. County Attorney's Report?
The report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Let's check out one thing here. On this here, um, someone said that, um, on the Recreation Advisory Board, um, committee from Harlow, they had posted one three, four months ago, but they said I didn't. So, did I give an application on the lady?
Okay. What was her name? And which board are we talking about?
On the Recreation Advisory Board? They said that they would have one here for the Harlow community.
Okay.
No, I submitted one, uh, about three months ago.
I'll go back and check.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, now we're up to the County Managers' Report.
Morning, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, appreciate the opportunity. Wanted just to confirm some dates with you. Since our last meeting, we have solidified the work sessions. Uh, the first date is November 2nd at 12:00 noon. That's your next meeting, but it'll be earlier, before the later meeting. We'll be here at noon, we'll work until finished and then break for the meeting. Uh, also, Nan spoke with each of you about the second work session, which dealt more with the budgetary items. The date that came out of that is December 14th, which is a Monday, at 8:30 AM.
December 14th?
Yes, ma'am. 8:30 AM. Okay? Uh, and then the report, I would tell you, last week, it felt more like a normal week for me. I had four of the committees. I sit on actually Matt, Highway 17, Highway 70, the Dick Center Board, and also called into that meeting. All seemed like their work's getting back on track. Uh, I was, I was actually pleased to be on those calls, particularly on the transportation side, where it appears DOT is working out some of the funding issues that have plagued them for several months now. I don't think it's completely fixed, but I think some money's starting to flow. I believe they were able to sell a bond, uh, recently, that's going to allow some cash flow issues to be resolved. The good news was, most of the major projects in Craven County are going to continue on schedule. Some of the ones that were either further out, or not as big an impact with the funding side, may have, still have some small delays. But, other than that, Mr. Chair, I'm available for questions, just should we have them?
Okay, are there any questions of the county manager?
Uh, one question on the, the funding. I know one of the, um, the 70 to 42 projects that had been delayed was going from what I will say Carolina Colors down towards Slocum Gate, that section.
Right.
Any of the, is any funding or date solidified on that, on that particular project?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, there is a small delay on that. It is, appears to be about nine months to a year. They're still in progress doing all their environmental review. We're still talking about acquisition, because there's several properties left to talk to the county about. Um, I think it's, it actually gave them a time to pause, to be more ready for when they go forward, and be ready to roll.
Okay.
I'd say nine, nine to 12-month delay on that one.
Okay, which is livable? It's, we're not talking five to six or 10 years?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
We will be getting together with Commissioner Booker, myself, and yourself after the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners Reports. I don't know where, where did I leave off last?
I don't have no report.
You pick it.
I have nothing to report.
You have nothing to report. Commissioner Booker?
No report.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Just one, sir. The MPO, New Bern MPO, will have a joint meeting of the TCC and TAC on November 19th. That will be part virtual and part in person, depending on who feels comfortable with what, to be looking at more longer-range MPO planning.
Okay. Vice Chairman?
Yes, sir, nothing.
Okay, and that leaves me. I would just hope that everybody gets out to vote. I, I usually don't bring up personal things, but I just want to state that, uh, my lovely wife, Lorraine, uh, and I will today celebrate our 36th wedding anniversary.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And George, we almost forgot you.
Well, you wasn't going to forget me, I'll tell you that. But, Mr. Chair, I have no report. Thank you, sir.
Okay, you're quite welcome. And, and I hope everything goes well for you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Uh, next is closed session. On personal matter? Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion is second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Yeah, let's take a 10-minute break.